Good evening. This study session of the Board of Education for February 3rd, 2014 is called to order. I'd like to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. While our study sessions are generally limited to our receipt of information from staff and discussion of that information and review of resolutions prior to a vote, at times we conduct votes during study sessions. Any item that will be voted on this evening has been posted as required by state law. This meeting is being televised live and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the Board website for replay times. This meeting is also being streamed live on our PBS TV services website. At this time, we will have public comment. Ms. Hewson, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
Yes, we have six. Our first two speakers, Joshua Curtis and Amanda Jane Elliott.
Great. While you're up, I'll go ahead and read the instructions prior to public comment. Thank you very much for taking the time to come to our board meeting. We deeply value public input and we look forward to hearing your thoughts, reflections, and concerns. Our responsibility as a board lies in actively listening and reflecting on the thoughts and opinions of others. Guidelines for public input emphasize respect and consideration when referring to board members, staff, and other presenters. The Board will not respond to any comments or questions at this time, but the Board or staff will follow up on various issues that are raised. Please make sure that you have left your contact information, either a phone number or email, on the sign-up sheet. Pursuant to Board Policy 1.70.012, speakers may offer objective criticism of district operations and programs, but the Board will not hear complaints concerning individual district personnel. Any complaints about specific employees should be directed to the superintendent's office and will not be heard in this forum. You have a total of three minutes to share your comments. Please begin by stating your name and spelling your last name for the record. During the first two minutes of your testimony, a green light will appear. When you have one minute remaining, a yellow light will go on. And when your time is up, the red light will go on and a buzzer will sound. And we respectfully ask that you conclude your comments at that time. We sincerely appreciate your input and thank you very much for your cooperation. So, go ahead.
My name is Joshua Curtis. That's C-U-R-T-I-S. Thank you for all the hard work that you've done for PPS. I think it's fair to say that PPS is facing some internal conflict in its community. There's a contentious contract negotiation that's ongoing. Less than a year ago, PPS finished up an enrollment balancing process in the Jefferson Cluster that, to use a technical term, pissed off many parents and families. And these are just two examples. I think it's clear that these conflicts take time and energy away from working to provide the education that the children in Portland deserve. I also think it's worth addressing what are really the roots of some of these conflicts. Many leaders throughout history, when faced with these kind of internal conflicts, have found a solution that I think PPS would be good to emulate. Those leaders have sought to find an external threat from which their community could unite around fighting. And PPS is a very real external threat. And that's our state's tax structure, which not only underfunds education at a statewide level, but which prevents local communities from providing for their children. It's easy to say, as members of this Board have done in the past, that the problems of the state tax system should be solved in Salem. That's true. They should be solved in Salem. But things don't always work the way they should. Many people would love to see this Board, as a group and as individuals, make a more public push for increased revenue from the state. And last May, Tom Kurler and Pam Knowles both got more votes than any state senator in the legislature. And the rest of you are close, just so you know. You all have power. There are many things that could be done to pressure the legislature into doing what it knows it should do: writing letters, forming PACs, raising money. I would emphasize that raising money point because that does seem to be a good way to get the state legislature to do things. And I think people would come behind leaders who wanted to do that. And I think it's all something you're very capable of. Each of you could raise some money. You would be advocating for more money. Andrew, you're younger and better looking, so you can raise twice as much as the rest of them, so, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Amanda Jane Elliott, E-double-L-I-O-double-T, teach at Lincoln High, and I'm the parent of children in Grant, Bowman, and Creston. I sat here three years ago and implored you to reconsider the ill-conceived notion of a six-of-eight schedule. At the time, I did not come close to guessing just how devastating the implications of that decision were going to be. School Board, you were disingenuous when you claimed the offer of a task force to work into, look into workload issues should satisfy us. You told us during the last contract negotiations the six-of-eight would be decided building by building. We would have input. Just a few weeks after that contract was signed, you imposed unilaterally. It was a monetary decision and it harmed students. This is not surprising as you make decisions with no collaboration and no understanding of the impact of these ill-informed decisions will have in classrooms. At Lincoln, a six-of-eight schedule has had dramatic implications on my working conditions and my students' learning conditions. We are at 147 percent capacity, a crippling condition exacerbated by the need to offer eight periods. It means no teacher is in their classroom without a class being taught. Think about that. Three teachers now share my classroom. There is not an empty room in Lincoln to grade, to communicate with parents, to meet with students, to simply be for a minute. It is impossible to put up student work or to make a welcoming learning environment as we churn students in and out. We have hundreds of students with gaps in their schedule, in a building where the cafeteria is being carved into classrooms and support staff slashed. Students have nowhere to go. They are forced to leave the building, and many of them don't bother coming back. Our truancy rate has skyrocketed. My own sophomore daughter has a six-period schedule and I have no way of knowing where she is in those empty hours. You should be ashamed of the cavalier attitude you have towards the welfare of our young people. My students lost three weeks of their school year with me when you imposed six-of-eight. They lost an entire short story unit and an entire film unit in my senior year. To claim giving an extra four minutes a period would give them that curriculum back is beyond insulting and speaks to the complete lack of understanding of the classroom experience. And you are clearly ignorant of what the hard-working, dedicated, and inspirational colleagues I work with do day in, day out, on your behalf. I started this year with 184 students. If I were to give them five minutes a week, one-on-one, that would add up to 15 hours a week. If you don't find that horrifying, I would like to know why. I hate students that getting ignored in my class and not getting the help they need. Your soul-destroying decisions have made my job impossible. When I assign an essay and spend just 10 minutes grading and offering feedback on each one, it takes 30 hours. You cut my prep time and give me more students, yet claim it will support student learning. What would support student learning? A return to the five-of-seven solves the workload issue as well as the lawsuit you are facing. It is sound educational practice. Your contract proposal means I won't unerble to provide good working conditions because it is not humanly possible. You may think this fight is about money, as that is what drives your decision. But you are mistaken if you think any of us are preparing to strike because we want more money. We are fighting for the schools Portland students deserve.
Thank you.
Our next, our next two speakers, Stephen Siegel and Hoa Vu.
Good evening.
Hi, my name's Stephen Siegel. Siegel is spelled S-I-E-G-E-L. Public education and its teachers are under attack. Across the country, corporate profiteers are looking to make money by investing in charter schools, technology and data collection, and of course, testing. The teachers' union is our country's largest remaining union, and there's nothing the corporate profiteers would like more than to take it down. As a parent of two elementary students attending Portland Public Schools, I'm concerned with the signs I see that the district leadership and Board are doing the bidding of these corporate profiteers: hiring expensive consultants, bargaining aggressively, using the media to attack teachers and their union. A while back, I read that in the opinion of the Board co-chairs, things like class size were not appropriate to be included in the teacher's contract because the state budget was unpredictable. The implications of this statement struck me. The Board was basically saying that every time there was a budget shortfall, they wanted to be able to lay off teachers and cut programs. This vision, or rather, lack of it, is called austerity. Austerity proponents argue that there is a shortage of money and that the answer to budget shortfalls is to cut public spending. The main proponents of austerity are the corporate profiteers, the same folks who lobby for corporate tax breaks, tax breaks that cause much of the budget shortfall. Their hope is to get richer and richer while the rest of us keep falling for their lies that there is a shortage of money. I don't think that austerity is what most people want here in Portland. Most parents and students want their teachers adequately compensated with reasonable cost of living increases. Most parents and students want smaller class sizes, not just when Wall Street is thriving, but consistently. Most parents and students want strong arts programs and wraparound services. Most parents and students want a rich, relevant curriculum that is developed through a collaboration between teachers, students, community members, not a one-size-fits-all corporate curriculum. You are elected representatives. Your job is to represent your constituents, the students who attend Portland Public Schools, and their parents. The Portland Business Alliance is not your constituent. The Oregon Business Council is not your constituent. We are. The only way our students will get the things I've listed is if they're included in a legally binding contract. Then the district will no longer be able to dismiss them as permissive or form another committee that talks about them endlessly but does very little. Then there will be pressure to find a real solution. So I repeat, the only way our students, especially our disadvantaged students, will get the things they need to succeed is if they're included in the contract. Lastly, to our teachers, here's a message from my family. Don't back down. Don't be afraid. We have your backs. We know you, we love you, and we'll support you whether you're at the negotiating table or on the picket line.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Hoa Vu, V-U. I am one of the parent representatives in the Vietnamese dual-language program collaborative design team. It's an honor for me to be here today on behalf of all the Vietnamese parents. Last Monday, January 22nd, we received a great news that the Board have approved the Vietnamese dual-language program starting this coming fall, 2014. It couldn't have come at a better time than this, during our Vietnamese New Year celebration. It was like the New Year gift that you give to our community of Portland, Oregon. And by far, this was the best gift we ever received. It was a gift that we had been waiting long, patiently, for a long time. We are here today to personally thank you, each of you in the Board of Directors, for your consideration and thoughtfulness. Thank you for approving the first Vietnamese dual-language program in Oregon. We are grateful that you are giving our children a chance to learn English without losing the native Vietnamese. Thank you for teaching our children how to be excellent bilingual and bicultural citizen Vietnamese Americans. Last but not least, thank you for allowing us to share our language and culture with the English-speaking students and families. We also would like to thank the Superintendent Carol Smith, Sarah Lewin, the principal of Rosewood Heights, for her willingness to take on our program this coming year. We also would like to thank the dual-language immersion group and the ESL group, especially Dappy and Manderis, Michael Bacon, Von Tru, for their dedication on starting the Vietnamese dual-language program. Also, our great gratitude to our panel, who have been our partner in the collaborative design team. Without their compassion and commitment, it would not be possible. Again, please accept a heartfelt thank you from the Vietnamese parents and all the community. We are committed to the success, so please let us know if they need anything else we could do to support the staff. We look forward to your continuous support during the long run of the program. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our last two speakers, David Morrison and Rodriguez De Shane.
Looks like Rodriguez didn't make it. David Morrison, M-O-R-R-I-S-O-N. I'd like to read an open letter to the superintendents of the school districts of the United States from the American Academy of Environmental Medicine. The American Academy of Environmental Medicine strongly supports the use of wired internet connections. The A-A-E-M comprises medical doctors, osteopaths, and PhD researchers focusing on the effects of environmental agents on human health. For 40 years, the Academy has trained physicians to treat the most difficult patients who are often overlooked in our medical system. In May 2011, the World Health Organization elevated exposure to wireless radiation, including Wi-Fi, into the Class 2B lists of carcinogens. There's consistent emerging science that shows people, especially children, who are more vulnerable due to developing brains and thinner skulls, are affected by the increasing exposure to wireless radiation. The peer-reviewed scientific literature demonstrates the correlation between RF exposure and neurological cardiac and pulmonary disease, as well as reproductive and developmental disorders, immune dysfunction, cancer, and other health conditions. The evidence is irrefutable. In September 2010, the Journal of the American Society for Reproductive Medicine, Fertility and Sterility, reported that only four hours of exposure to a standard laptop using Wi-Fi caused DNA damage to human sperm. In December 2012, the American Academy of Pediatrics, representing 60,000 pediatricians, wrote to Congress requesting an update safety levels of microwave radiation exposure, especially for children and pregnant women. In a school setting, children are exposed to Wi-Fi for an unprecedented period of time, for their entire childhood. Some of these signals will be much more powerful than is received at home due to the need for the signals to go through walls and serve multiple computers simultaneously. To install the system in your school district risks a widespread public health hazard that the medical system is not yet prepared to address. Statistics show that you can expect to see an immediate reaction in 3 percent and delayed effects in 30 percent, including teachers. We implore you not to take the risk with the health of so many children who have entrusted you to keep them safe while at school. Respectfully, the American, the Executive Committee of the American Academy of Environmental Medicine. So my questions for this Board are these: How seriously have you considered your high duty to protect the health and welfare of our children by exposing them to seven hours of microwave radiation daily? Have you notified parents and teachers when they are in a public school building they will be exposed to seven hours of a Class 2B carcinogen? What science has convinced you that our children are safe in a microwaved environment? Are you willing to review the current science with a panel of scientists, medical professionals, citizen activists, parents, and politicians? Where is your moral compass that allows you to continue with your heads in the sand? You're invited to a meeting of the Health Committee of the State Legislature, the 24th of this month, to hear a presentation on the biological effects of chronic microwave exposure.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison. Thank you to everybody who testified. Feel free to connect with Ms. Hewson, our Board Clerk, to make sure you have any of your contact information with her. At this time, I'd like to ask Superintendent Smith if you would please give us an update on negotiations.
I would, and somebody was going to load the PowerPoint for me at this point. So just an update on our mediation. On Friday, January 31st, we spent another 16 hours at the table with the state mediator. I know people are aware that this Wednesday, February 5th, PAT will be conducting a strike vote. And then we will be back on Sunday, February 9th, for another session with the state mediator. So those are kind of what's, what's coming up. I continue to get questions about the district's mediation proposal, so I will, I did this last week, but I'm going to run through it again this week, just very straightforward. This remains on the table. So the salary over three years of contract would be steps plus 2 percent per year over the three years, which is a 1.05 percent rate for the two additional days. This is between a 7% to 17% increase for every teacher over the life of the contract. Insurance, the proposal on the table, would leave insurance at status quo, where the district maintains its current share of insurance premiums at 93 percent, or $1,397 per month. And professional educators would maintain their current share at 7 percent, or about $117 per month. Early retirement incentive, the eligibility for the district's payment of health insurance for retirees would phase out over the three years of the agreement. And employees who have 15 years of district service by June 30th would still be eligible for a monthly stipend upon retirement up to age 62. The changes to the hiring practice would include one internal transfer round as part of spring staffing and using the state definition of competence when making layoff and transfer decisions. Workload relief, and as you know, this has been a very substantive conversation at the table. We are now on, as part of the district's mediation proposal, directing all of the 7.8 million from the special session to hire more professional educators for the 2014-15 school year, which is approximately 88 FTE. Student loads would be reduced to the 2010-11 levels by the 2016-17 school year. And we would establish a joint committee to define workload and address workload concerns around the district, both in big picture and budget recommendations and advocacy recommendations, as well as ones raised by individual teachers for resolution in the immediate term. The proposal adds two instructional days to the school calendar for K through 8 students, three instructional days for high school students, and allows for the continuation of the eight-period high school schedule, as well as meeting Oregon Department of Education course-hour requirements. And that's, that is the proposal. The second thing I've received questions about is the, the relationship between the budget amendment that you just walked through in detail and the upcoming budget cycle, which we're just beginning. The Board received the detail of this in its last, in the last meeting. What I want to do for you tonight is do big picture, what is the relationship from the, between the budget amendment and the upcoming budget and its relationship to FTE or staffing in the schools? So I am calling this the overview of our 2013 to 15 investments, both sustainable and one-time. And this is a little bit of a visual to try and walk you through. So the blue bar up there is the 2013-14 year, the year we're in, and the, what is red, actually, that, I don't know what a color it looks like, but 2014-15 is the upcoming budget year. So this is both years of the biennium. What you just heard, and you can see right up here, the additional resources that were just identified in the budget amendment, 19.6 million in additional resources, and we went through the detail of what comprises that, and cost savings that were identified of 6.5 million. What that did was allow us, in the current year, and we did this in October and in January, invest 8.6 million between those two adds, which added 60 FTE, both licensed and classified staff that are now in our schools in the year, in the current year, as well as some strategic investments. It also allowed us to do a one-time investment here, 3.5 million, so does not need to be repeated or sustained in the coming year. 3.5 million to complete the tech bundles for teachers, which was partially rolled out. This allows us to provide tech bundles for the rest of our teachers that had not yet received them. And then, this is the key part that has created confusion for people. When we added the 8.6 million right here, we also reserved the same amount to be able to continue that group of staff in the second year. So we hold in reserve 8.6 million right now, so that we are able to, in the next budget year, oops, add that 60 FTE next year and sustain them, so that we're not starting from scratch. That's the first building block of next year's budget, are continuing the 60 FTE we added this year. And then down at the bottom, what that's, what that leaves us is 5.4 million that is left in reserve, added to reserve, and that begins the investment that will then come over to start. That added to our res, our revenue forecast, which you heard last week, comes over and becomes the beginning of the next budget cycle. So the 5.4 million you see right here, down here, then gets added into our revenue forecast for the coming year. So that's 15.7 million that we're describing, that we have available to invest in 14-15. With that, we are projecting the ability to add 100 FTE, which will be, the district staffing team will begin its look at how that is to be allocated. But it includes, as we know right now, the 7.8 million or 88 FTE that are designated through the special session, that's Portland Public Schools' portion of that, as well as 11 FTE that are specifically targeted to elementary schools in order to create additional planning time. So that's what's in that 100 FTE. It also allows us to add two instructional days and make some small strategic investments that are determined in the budgeting process, which brings us down to, over this biennium, having added a total of 160 FTE plus two days plus our strategic investments. So this takes you through, again, the combination of 60 FTE here that were added in the current year, the ability to then do that in year two and sustain that 60, 100 FTE that will be added in the, in the coming budget process, down to 160 FTE in day two, I mean, in year two. Detail of all this was provided last week. What I understood people were having a tough time with was the relationship between the two years and how that's building. So I hope that provides some clarity for you. And that's it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. The Board previous, so, we're going to move on to our next agenda item, Ed specs. Now, the Board previously had a lengthy discussion on this item at its study session on January 21st. I believe we have some follow-up information from questions that were generated through that study session. Superintendent Smith, would you like to introduce this?
I would, and I'll introduce CJ Sylvester, who is our Chief Operating Officer, and Sue Anne Higgins, our Chief Academic Officer, to provide this report.
We can get the PowerPoint up on the screen. On January 21st, Project Manager Paul Cathcart and Lead Consultant John Weeks presented the comprehensive high school education specifications to the Board. This evening, we wanted to provide some clarifications of information and questions that were raised during that meeting. As a quick reminder, school buildings are designed and constructed to support educational needs. In the last 50 years, much has become known about the variety of ways in which people learn. No person has only one style, but may use multiple ways to glean information. Our modernized facilities must contain a variety of types of spaces to meet these needs, so that we can best support our goal of success for every student.
So some elements that you see in the education specification coming to you now include, first of all, that the bond that was passed is about full modernization. And so while our work is informed by the past, it is really working to plan for education in the future, but not by recreating the past. So that's been an important thing for me to understand. Additionally, for me, it took a while to understand the ed specification that you're looking at now is not the master plan. It is the recipe. It has the main ingredients. And I know when I was a pastry chef in graduate school, I would start with a recipe, and I might make one of those things, or I might make 16 of them at one time. And so what the recipe did was tell me what the ratios of things to each other were. And so it's been helpful for me to think of the ed spec in those terms in some ways, because we know that we're going to be designing high schools of slightly different sizes, with different current footprints, with different desires, community by community, and also wanting to reflect- wanting to reflect that through, along community input process, what the ingredients should be in the basic recipe are influencing then what comes to you now. So I wanted to share that. And so a couple of the things that you see here that are variations from current state. So the first one, and one that's very important to me, is that larger classrooms will be characteristic in these buildings. Currently, for instance, the average classroom at Franklin High School is roughly six hundred square feet. This specification increases that by over three hundred square feet. One of the things that we know is going to really become more and more true is just the levels of collaboration in classrooms. So teachers having flexible space within the room for students to work in multiple groups, to do project-based learning, and to have groups work in ways where they're not interrupting one another, will be important. Additionally, we'll have extended learning areas, so spaces that we have traditionally not had, where you'll just see a long hallway, and the only things on that hallway are conventional classrooms. So you'll see more flexible spaces, smaller instructional spaces, as well as larger classrooms, maker spaces, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. Conference areas that will also provide space for collaborative teacher offices, counseling conference rooms. Typically now, if you have a, a meeting that needs to have a number of people in it, it's hard to find that space. Really intentional career centers to reflect our investment in college and career work, and, and a larger commons area than most of our schools currently have.
It's become perfectly clear over time that using the term enhanced electives has been confusing at best. So to clarify intent, that term in the education specifications has now been changed to career preparation slash CTE, and those spaces are now clearly shown as required. For the comprehensive high school, we continue to call out a baseline of six thousand net square feet for career preparation CTE, to be utilized in a synergistic way with other required spaces.
Do you want to talk a little bit about CTE?
Yes. We've been working with several internal and external stakeholder groups to develop our larger career preparation programs going forward. And by September, we believe that we will have established a floor of career preparation programs in our schools, and then continue to build out the larger and longer-term college and career readiness work. So we've been doing that work at schools, we've been doing it with the Parents Coalition, work with community groups, alumni groups, and business. And teachers have been involved in these conversations. So what we've been looking at is how do we have spaces that aren't a cookie cutter, so that every school looks alike, but again, is clear about what are the minimum ingredients for the recipe for a modern comprehensive school? And next week, we'll be bringing to you a much more complete report around the recommendations from the high school action team. And there's really explicit, explicitly in that work, you will see what we know to be the connection between college and career readiness work and our ability to retain students, to skill them, and to support them being successful through graduation and into their post-secondary plans.
As examples for you this evening, the schematic design phase of Franklin High School has progressed, and this slide identifies the current and ongoing conversation about career preparation and CTE at that school. You may recall that the schematic designs are intended for Franklin and Roosevelt to be finalized and brought before you in April of this year for your review and approval. Part of the conversation around career preparation and CTE is about dedicated space, and some of it is around shared space, but otherwise required spaces that accomplish multiple goals. And where you can see that in the PowerPoint is here where we've got classroom and, and computer labs, where those spaces are providing direct support to career prep and CTE, but they are also providing functions for other parts of the curriculum delivery at the comprehensive high school. So the same is true at Roosevelt High School, where the conversation is similar, but different. This is because each of our comprehensive high schools is unique in its own way. Different communities, different approaches. There has been quite a bit of curiosity and even consternation about teacher workstations. Common teacher workspaces are intended to foster and promote professional community. They support collaboration and problem-solving amongst professional teams and facilitate important interactions in support of student success. Common workspace, planning time, and common tasks make possible collegial interactions.
We certainly know that teacher practice is changing. It's becoming more portable, just as is the work that students do, how they do it and where they do it. And so increasing the desired types of spaces throughout schools, given that the footprints essentially remain the same, means that there are trade-offs. Everyone who's done their own home remodel knows that there comes a point where everything that was on your dream list is up against everything else. And, and so the opportunity for us to utilize classrooms more hours of the day is only going to be practical by providing several things that have been spoken to here. And I appreciated our teacher colleague from Lincoln referring to, that the challenge is, where are you when you're out of your classroom doing your preparation, conferencing with students and their families, conferencing with colleagues? So these spaces with intention build that into the school space, as do the other flexible spaces, conferencing rooms, small breakout rooms, and as, and our investment now in the tech bundles across our schools, making certain that in these high schools, teachers will have the portability of their practice that may be needed, while still wanting to limit the number of classrooms that they utilize.
Staff has worked very hard to marry the community vision into workable education specifications. These education specifications are now being fine-tuned into schematic designs at Franklin and Roosevelt High Schools that meet twenty-first century educational requirements, as well as budget and site constraints. We'd be happy to answer any further questions you may have this evening.
So let's first get our resolution on the floor. The board will now consider resolution four eight seven one, resolution to adopt district education specifications for comprehensive high schools. Do I have a motion and a second?
I'd like to move to approve.
Second. Director Blile moves, and Director Atkins seconds the motion to adopt four eight seven one. Ms. Houston, is there any citizen comment on this?
There is none.
Thank you. Is there any board discussion? Director Curler?
Certainly. I've got a few questions here. Thank you. So in terms of, Sue Anne, you were talking about the educational aspect of this, and I'm still wondering how the, the six thousand square feet fit, fits into it. Do we know what it would take in terms of, certainly every high school is going to be different, but I think there's a general consensus that we want hands-on learning as part of the offering, and that we want an ability to, that students learn their, their core academics through building things. So I mentioned before, the trigonometry or geometry class at Benson, and three days in the classroom, two days in the shop. If we were to extend, just as an example, that way of hands-on learning, which is actually a little bit different than career technical education or career pathways, but it, it is very much in sync with it. If we were to do that for, as a, as a way of teaching, how much space do we need in, in a high school to go out and hands-on build things, applying the academics learned in the classroom? Is that six thousand feet, six thousand square feet?
Director Curler, I would say that most teachers do that now without lots of extra space. So all the great math teachers in our school district are currently doing a variety of apply, applications of what they're teaching their students. And the opportunity for students to be able to do more hands-on work is undeniably desirable in my mind. And how to quantify that in terms of space is complex. I felt very strongly that the career preparation work be moved into the required section of the ed spec, and so I'm very happy to see that it sits there now. Additionally, I would say that when I reviewed these design schematics for Franklin and Roosevelt, I saw that the multiple kinds of applied learning spaces over those two campuses as examples really tells a much broader story, and an important one, I think. So I don't have a way to give you a square footage, that's not my area of expertise, so, but I believe that...
But it just out of curiosity, because it's not, it's, so we have the builder...
Yes.
And so the hardware and the software.
Yes.
And, and maybe there's not a great answer to this question, but I was just saying, asking it, because I think the, it is your responsibility as software to, if, if we're going to change the way that we're educating, to have some sort of space requirement to fit into the hardware. But let me ask it another way, because if, if Roosevelt has decided that thirteen thousand square feet is, is what they need, and Franklin has determined that twenty thousand square feet is what they need, why would we put six thousand feet in the ed spec?
May I speak to that?
Yes.
If you're looking at the net square feet from PowerPoint slides six and seven, you're looking at a total that includes some of the required square feet that's required for additional programs as well. So when I was highlighting under the bars, classroom space and computer labs, where it has a parenthetical that says "in the building program," that's part of the required square feet, whether it's being used for career preparation CTE or not. So those are spaces that are providing, you know, double duty, as it were. So they're supporting career preparation CTE, but they're also being used for other purposes. So the numbers you're really looking at are six thousand net square feet at Roosevelt and twelve thousand six hundred net square feet at Franklin that are shown currently as dedicated for career preparation CTE. And I have to say currently, because it is subject to change, because we are in the schematic design phase.
And I was told by two, two folks now, one at the Roosevelt DAG and another that has attended several of the DAG meetings, so a member of the public, that the reason Roosevelt has six thousand square feet is because they were told that that's what's in the education spec. So, and so if, if Franklin can go to twelve thousand square feet, wouldn't we want to, I guess what I'm trying to do is, is in the resolution, I'm, I would like to flip it, so we have, right now we have a footnote that says, that says, six thousand square feet minimum, subject to change with the community. And what I'd like to flip is actually to say, no, here's what, here's what, here's an example, and let's call it the Franklin example, since that's, Benjamin Franklin's said a lot of great examples. What's happening at Franklin is an incredible thing, incredible principal, credible teachers, it's an awesome community. And so can't we make that the standard, and you know, speaking of kind of learning, you know, taking the best of class and using that as a standard? Can't we use that as a standard? And then say, have the footnote saying, well, if you want to do it smaller, you can do it smaller. Instead of having the footnote saying, this little thing, if you want to go bigger, you can go bigger. That's, I guess, what I'd like to propose as an idea. And, yeah.
Let's get, let's continue the discussion, and then if you want to amend the resolution, you can...
Yeah, but I, but I pose that as a discussion.
Right, right. Other, other discussion? Greg?
Sure.
Director Blile?
Both are fine. I just want to say thank you for these ed specs. We've been working on these for a long time, you've been working on them a long time, and we've seen them a number of times, and I really appreciate, Ms. Higgins, your being here to explain some of the pedagogy or some of the reasoning behind, or the thought behind it from the academic side, because again, these are fulfilling the academic mission. And I also just want to say that it was, it's been really exciting participating on the design advisory groups. And again, I can only speak to Franklin's, but the responsiveness, the, the fluidity of these documents and how they grow, or, because everything you grow, you diminish something else, because there's a set amount of space there. But I just, I appreciate the effort that, that's gone into these, and I'm very excited by them. And I actually, a little bit back to your point, Director Curler, is, when I was at the last, and I think you were there, the last design advisory group, the, the CTE, or one of the, the CTE teachers was actually concerned about building maker space without assigning it to somebody, to say that, that's somebody, so for example, a shared idea that people can come out of their classrooms and into the space, because they were looking at it saying, well, that's just a congregating place, that who knows if it's going to be used. I'd rather, I'd rather expand my shop, for example, by another two thousand square feet that I know kids are going to be in every day, every minute. So I think it's just those kind of conversations, I think, that are challenging to narrow, narrow down, and so to make more space, that flexible space, I think, I just, I appreciate the balance that, that folks have taken, and I appreciate the responsiveness that, that has come on into these from, from our, from our input.
Director Atkins?
Yeah, I think I agree with that, and I think as long as it's clear to all the design advisory groups that it is a minimum of six thousand, and that they can look at trade-offs, as I understand Franklin has, but, I mean, they're all very well aware that there are trade-offs in terms of space and program with all of this. So I wouldn't want any, I want to make sure that all the design groups are clear on that, that they have that it is a minimum, but that they have to, they would have to work within those trade-offs and constraints, as well as what they're hearing, their community really wants to have provided in the school. And we know they also want art, we all also want arts and counseling and wraparound services and all the other pieces. So I'm very comfortable, I appreciate, as Director Blile said, the way you've come back and, and made some changes to the ed specs, making sure that the career preparation is clarified as being a required piece. But I'm comfortable the way it is here and supportive of the resolution as written. So thanks so much for your work, and I'm so excited to see this moving forward. It's just thrilling to think of the environments our kids and teachers are going to have.
Director Curler?
Sure. And then, let's see, Greg, maybe you, you, you know the answer to this. Or, or, but first we'll ask these guys here. At Franklin, they came back and, with the, with the schematic design, and came back with this twenty thousand square feet. Twelve thousand was a shop where people go make things. And, and some of the maker teachers, as, as Greg was saying, was hoping that they could, they could even have more space for their own projects. They're very supportive of this, though, however, because I, I received an email from that teacher the next day. Yeah. But they didn't take away anything from our ed specs, as I understood it, as I understood their architect saying, we still have the two gymnasiums, we still have the art space, we still have the black box. And so I'm saying, wow, that's great. That's, that's a standard. Is that how you?
It's not how I took it.
Okay.
I took it as that there were a number of things that they actually did take away. So it was eighty square foot...
So, it was 80 square foot per classroom, for example, throughout the whole building, which is significant.
One square foot?
No, 80 square feet. So, they, within the original EdSpecs, there were 980 square foot per classroom, and they went down to 900 to shave that off. And so, again, as we talk about building for the future, and then there was, and I'm not going to remember the details, but there was 1,200 square foot from this thing, we decided to move it over here, or put it this way. But there was a consolidating, and then there was some additional, okay, we maybe overestimated this piece.
But in terms of the big-ticket items-
Same number of classrooms.
Same number of classrooms, same number of double gyms, same number of art, same, same, black box.
Yep.
Yeah.
I would like to clarify one thing you said, Director Kurler, you said there's 12,000 square feet in shop space, and that's actually not what's being shown, or was shown, at the design advisory group. There's currently two shops at 2,000 square feet each, two lecture slash lab classrooms at 1,200 square feet each, a maker space at 1,200 square feet, and then some support spaces for those. And then you have a culinary arts classroom at 2,000 square feet, and a courtroom classroom for law, constitution, and mock trial at 1,500 square feet. So, you end up with a total of 12,600 net square feet in those spaces. So, I just wanted to make sure that it was clear that it's not one single big shop.
No, no, and that's, that's not what I meant. And actually, other than, other than law and constitution, mock trial, it's all essentially, what I refer to as maker space, and I'm probably being inappropriate, but it's where you, you just go out and you go make things, whether it's cooking, or welding, or robotics, or 3D printers, or whatever. You're making things, you're applying your academics. So, that is roughly, so, minus, it would be 11,000 square feet, is what we have.
Any other, Professor Beulah?
I don't have any questions.
The Director Morton, but he's gone, so.
Having an amendment?
I don't know.
I, yeah, but did you want to, I wanted to wait till you had anything to say.
The only real question I have is, I'm looking at the law, constitution, mock trial, courtroom, classroom, is that really going to look like a courtroom? Is that, I'm just kind of curious, if you have any idea what that really looks like right now, or we just-
We're not that far into design.
Right.
I mean, they've identified a location for it that is perfectly appropriate in what had been the old theater.
Right.
But the specifics are unknown still.
Yeah, it's just kind of interesting.
What it looks like, I mean, it's perhaps in the old theater, and it joins the library.
It does.
And so, it has a really nice kind of open, what I imagine, but.
Well, given Franklin's great performance at the last Constitution team, I'm very happy that they're being so enthusiastic about it, so, that's great. I don't have any other questions. So, did you want to go ahead and do an amendment?
I would like to amend.
Okay.
And I, and I would like to amend the, the square footage to 12,000 square feet.
Let's find it here.
Well, what it calls out is, is the schematic plan, I believe.
So, what's the, what, what do you, what change are you suggesting for the resolution?
What I'd like to change is, is instead of having 6,000 square feet as, with a footnote saying this is the minimum, I'd like to have 12,000 square feet as our target best-in-class scenario, and make it clear that it's flexible depending upon the schematic design.
So, what would that be in terms of a resolution, because it's not currently called out in the resolution?
I don't know, maybe you can help me figure it out. I want 12,000 square feet in there.
Okay, hold on just a second.
Yeah.
So, CJ, under number two in the resolution, is attachment A, the EdSpecs themselves?
Attachment A is the EdSpecs that you originally received, and then-
Attachment two is this one?
And then attachment two is the one that was the attachment to the staff report this time, which is where we made the changes to Career Preparation CTE, made it required to have the area programs, both in terms of the summary page. And that, I think the summary page is where the footnote is, it's footnote one on the area program summary page, that says each comprehensive high school will contain a minimum of 6,000 square feet for Career Preparation/CTE. And then it has a further statement, which is may be modified upon further research regarding STEM/CTE program requirements.
So-
So, I believe what Director Kurler is suggesting he would like to amend is this footnote in the area program, which would be the attachment two that is referenced in resolution, be it resolved number two.
Attachment two is what you're going to amend.
That's correct. And then, and that would change-
So, as amended.
And then it would, it would change, it also would change in, on page 33 of the area program, where it says CTE, with the footnote, it would say 12,000 here. And then the footnote would change and say, if you want to make it smaller.
So, then what would that do to the totals?
It means that the total is more than had previously, than we have funds for. So, it's a practical matter for budget, it puts us over budget in terms of the dollar figure relative to the available space, because we're not suggesting where that additional 6,000 square feet would come from, should we go to a 12,000 square foot. I believe what the director's saying is that, that 12,000 is preferred, if it can be developed during the design process. I mean, that might be another way of characterizing the same thing.
And, you know, or the other thing is, maybe we can also just take this back, I mean, there's not a huge, there's, unless, people want to vote on it. But the facts are, okay, we can vote on it tonight. The facts are that Franklin is doing, is not cutting out, are you going to be over budget, Franklin? Are they going to be over budget?
Well, I certainly hope that neither of them are over budget.
No, they're not going to be over budget, and they're going to be on time, they're going to have kick-ass schools. So is Roosevelt.
That's, that's correct.
But, and we can do all that and have a 12,000 square foot CTE spec, which I'd like to include in this resolution.
I would respectfully suggest that-
How about-
The way that the two design teams have gone about this are different, and every design, the design team that comes in on Grant High School will be different as well, and they respond to their communities in different ways, and-
And, and as I, I mean-
And perhaps it doesn't matter what I think.
No, it does, it does, but the only, what I would like to respond to that is what I said earlier, is that the Roosevelt DAG has said, two people have come up to me and said, the reason we're, we're only doing 6,000 square feet is because that is what we've been told is in the EdSpecs.
So, so, I'm wondering if it would be possible for you to step back for, while we are continuing on the agenda, and maybe come up with amendment that works, and then we'll have an opportunity to vote on it, because right now, this is just an amendment that we don't know if there's support for. So, if we could have something-
What about, well, procedurally, if there's a way, without having, it's worked out-
A general idea?
We have a chance to look at it, but whether staff needs, is there support for the concept of, I mean, to me, I'm, I'm more comfortable the way it is now, that we, and as long as it's clear, the design advisory groups understand that it is a minimum, and that like at Franklin, they can make adjustments, knowing that there are trade-offs.
Right.
So, that, I'm comfortable with that, as long as it's communicated equally to all the design advisory groups, so they all have that same authority.
If we did a, the interest of the board, to see if there was interest in amending, before we send them off to-
Sure, but we'll take a vote.
Yeah.
If you're honest. You're right, I mean, if that works, as you-
I take your advice on that.
Can we do that? Thank you. Okay. Trying to figure out how to frame this. How about, for my, my sheet on how to amend, here we go. How about a motion for, how about a draft resolution suggesting a minimum of 12,000 square feet be included on page 33 of the EdSpecs? Does that, does that get us going?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So, I need a motion and a second for a resolution that would amend-
Okay.
What? Amend section two to include a change that would change the 6,000 square foot to 12,000 square feet within the EdSpecs on page 33, and are there, did you say there's someplace else?
Yeah, and then the footnote would, would get changed to say, if you would like to, remain that six-
To have less than that?
Less than that, 6,000 is the minimum.
All right. So-
Yeah.
Are you moving that?
I so moved, thank you.
You so moved that. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Okay. Director Kurler moves, and Board Member Beulah seconds to amend the motion by adding, substituting the words that we have just explained. Is there just any further discussion on that amendment?
So, if we know that it will require us to redo the totals, then we may also want to then, as part of it, direct the staff that we then have to go back and redo the totals, so that we are-
So, it all makes sense.
An expectation that we're within budget, so it means we're going to eliminate something else in the EdSpecs in order to make it possible.
Let's do that as a second amendment.
Just making sure people are clear as you're voting, that that would be part of what we would need to do. Yeah, okay.
Okay. I think, Steve, Director Beulah, did you have a-
I was just going to say that in years and years that I taught school, one of the things that was most dissatisfying to me was the fact that they had moved away and moved all these types of hands-on activities out of the school. And I think having those in the EdSpecs kind of says, we're moving them back into the school where they belong. And so, that's why I like the motion.
Director Morton?
So, I guess I'm trying to, I'm, I'm trying to see if this is just, it feels like it's just semantics to me.
It is.
And I, okay.
And it's, yes, and it's just semantics.
Right.
Let's let him go ahead.
Right. So, but either way, there's going to be some correcting going on that will be happening from this point forward, and there'll be give and take in square footage. I mean, again, as Greg mentioned earlier, there's a finite space, finite dollars, we obviously know that. But some of that will be give and taken, and there will be consistent input as that happens all along the way, I'm assuming, I'm hoping. So, I'm, it sounds like, and I just want to be really clear, but the semantic piece of this, to me, sounds like we are, rather than using language around minimums, we're using really language around preferred, or best practice, or something to that effect. And I'm, I mean, during this, and we've talked a lot about this, but during this conversation, I'm not 100% knowing the variation that you have in each school, and knowing that, you know, the community that's involved, and the students, and the staff, teachers, and so on, I'm not entirely sure we can say there's a best practice in this, or there's a, for any individual school. I agree with Steve's comment that, yeah, absolutely. I mean, this is, I think we're demonstrating a clear commitment that we want CTE in our comprehensive schools, and there's a huge value add to that for our students. But I haven't had a great deal of clarity in terms of a best practice from 6,000 to 10,000 to 12,000. I know you can fit more and more space, obviously, but you have to look at that systemically, right? You have to look at that across an entire system. At what point do you, do you cut off space available in a comprehensive high school like Franklin, or Roosevelt, or Grant, and then offer a greater, more robust program, CTE program at a school like Benson? So, that's, that's where I'm kind of stuck on, on this. I appreciate, and I, I do support language that is, isn't always talking about minimums, but talking about, this is, this is what we would like to see and like to achieve. But I don't necessarily see a practical difference in what's going to happen from this point forward with changing the language. That's my-
Except that if we change the summary and the required space in the square footage, then we have to go back, and either, either we'll be over budget, or we have to go back and reorganize the whole thing. So, to me, we need to move this forward, making it very clear, again, this is a minimum, and design advisory groups are requested to make their trade-offs for their, what works best for their community. I'm not comfortable at this point of going back and changing all the numbers. We need to move this process forward. And I absolutely agree, we want to have those robust conversations about what's, what's the best mix, what can we do. But I'm not comfortable with, with changing the numbers at this point, we need to move on.
I would agree, I'm a little bit hesitant about the numbers quite yet. But I do understand the, the reason why, you know, we would be doing it. I guess my concern is that I have seen these numbers as a minimum, but if they're being conveyed to the DAGs as a maximum, that's really my concern. So, even if we make this document perfect, I'm afraid that the, the way it's being conveyed to the community is incorrect. So, I feel like if we can put our energy there and focus on how it's actually being used, that's where, you know, we should be focusing.
Any other, any other comments? I would just say that, first of all, I want to thank Director Kurler for continuing the discussion on CTE and keeping it at the forefront, because it's also very important to me to see that our students have opportunities for hands-on learning and other kinds of career technical education. I'm kind of at the same place where I think Director Morton is, and I'm also persuaded, to a certain extent, by what's happened at Franklin, where they have actually taken the 6,000 square feet, and it is now 12,000 square feet plus, plus the extra. And I'm, and I know that Roosevelt is still in the middle, still has work to do, and maybe they will take the direction from Franklin, their community, and see if there's other places where they can also add to their CTE space that they, they currently have. So, that's, those are my comments. Why don't we go ahead, and I'm trying to look for my, okay, so let's go ahead and vote on the amendment. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no.
No.
Okay. Then the amendment is not approved. Oh, and Student Representative, excuse me, Davidson?
No.
No. It's not approved. So, let's move on then to the Resolution 4871. All those in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Do I have any abstentions? I didn't hear you. Yes or no?
Oh, I said, I said yes.
Yes, yes, okay. Is a-
I'll take 6,000 over nothing.
Resolution 4871 is approved by a vote of, excuse me, six to zero with Student Representative Davidson voting.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, every year, let's move on to open enrollment. Every year, the district must declare by March 1st whether there will be seats at any schools available for open enrollment transfers for students from other districts. Superintendent Smith, would you like to introduce this item?
I would. So, Judy Brennan, who's our Director of Enrollment and Transfer, will present this item. And as Chair Knowles remarked, the legislature passed new laws about inter-district transfers, which we come back and look at annually and make recommendations about how our district handles inter-district transfers. So, Judy?
Good evening, nice to see you all again. And I guess this is the night for very technical information. I'm going to keep up with that theme. And I have a very brief PowerPoint to guide you through. And you will have a resolution coming to you before the end of the month. I just wanted to take an opportunity today, thank you, to embed this in, in some information that you probably need about these broader changes that the legislature's been bringing in. And indeed, more will be coming forward this month on this issue. Okay? Okay. So I'd like to start with just sort of the big context. Inter-district transfer is allowing kids to move across district lines. There's a standard process for that now. Portland has participated historically. We receive between 800 and 1,000 requests from kids who live in other districts to attend PPS schools. We say yes to most of them. We're an enticing district for a number of reasons. We have great programs, we're centrally located near where a lot of other districts are, and we've traditionally had a lot of space in our schools. We've also allowed students who live in PPS to attend other districts, however, that's been more limited. Again, we have a number of great programs here, we think we can meet the needs of most kids. So we've limited our approvals to students who move in the middle of the year or who are finishing their highest grade in a school. So most of our inter-district transfers, just so you know, are because a family moves across district lines after their kids have started school. And they want it, they seek continuation, usually, if nothing else, just to finish that school year, and sometimes for beyond that. So less than 200 of, about 200 students a year go out of PPS. So the net is between 600 and 800 students, and in PPS, that's a lot of kids. What about these non-residents? Well, the kids are also eligible for our annual lottery that is open now, so elementary, middle opened today, high school opened last week, and we will see non-resident students applying in that. But it's a really small part of the overall percentages. There was a chart in your packet that showed that. Last year, only 5% of our lottery applicants lived outside of our district, and only 3% of our lottery approvals were kids who live out of district. So that would be for the first time you're entering Portland Public Schools as a non-resident. Once you get approved, you get renewed every year through the typical process. You only have to go into the lottery once, but if you go in once, you make up only, as I said, 5% of our applicants and only 3% of our approvals last year. The standard approval process requires that both districts agree. So if a student wants to come into PPS, we have to say yes, and the resident district has to say yes. If a student wants to go out of PPS, we have to say yes, the district they want to go to says yes. And that process has to be renewed every year. So there's a whole lot of paperwork and activity around this, and that's been the standard practice for many, many, many years. Another important point is that charter schools are exempt from that practice. So when you look at figures in our, the enrollment profiles, for example, on our overall number of inter-district transfers, you will see higher numbers than what I'm reflecting for you today because kids can come into PPS charters from other districts without going through that standard process. I think it's about 12% of our charter enrollment is made up of kids from outside the district. So all that is fine, and just the good busy work of PPS on a regular day, but there is recent legislation that's brought significant change to the inter-district process. So I just want to briefly walk you through what that is. So first of all, in summer 2011, the legislature approved a bill that's become known as the open enrollment bill, and that was one that was meant to sunset. So that's a temporary, it will be sunsetting in 2017. What that does is allows districts to accept kids from other districts without requiring permission from the resident district. So we could have kids come in and the resident district couldn't say no. In order to participate in that, a district has to agree to do a lot of things for, for that group of kids. We have to follow a statutory timeframe that includes a lottery. So by March 1st, every school board has to declare whether they're going to participate in open enrollment, and if so, how many slots are going to be available. And one of the reasons I'm coming to you tonight because it's almost March 1st and it's time for you to make that declaration once again. If you have more applicants in this open enrollment lottery than space, you have to run a lottery, and the lottery has to prioritize resident students before non-resident students. Okay? So if you're going to do open enrollment, resident kids have to get the space first. And that's how our standard PPS lottery works in Board Policy. There's a category for non-residents, and it's after all the residents. So the point of this is to say that if you wanted to see more than 3% of your lottery applicants that are non-residents get approved, you would have to make more space for resident kids to move first. So you'd have to move a whole lot of resident kids in order for additional kids from other places to, to join in as part of open enrollment. The other thing that open enrollment does is it's blind to student demographics and academic information, that's a new state requirement. In our current lottery, we wait for poverty and for gender, and that's meant to help balance enrollment at our schools. We would no longer be able to apply those waits to kids who come in through the open enrollment. So that's another change that would have to be implemented. We can't just run our standard lottery for those kids. If you get in through open enrollment, here's what you get out of it. You get approval for those students without requiring their other districts to participate, and they get to stay through 12th grade. You never, never have to worry that the other district is going to say no, they go back, they get to stay for 12th grade. In fact, unless the parent chooses differently, they have to stay through 12th grade. So a student who lives out of district, comes to PPS and has very, very poor attendance or significant behavioral issues, that our district would no longer be able to revoke that agreement and return them to their neighborhood school. So that is sort of open enrollment in a nutshell, what you get and what you have to give. For the rest of the year, outside of that little lottery window that you would open and call it open enrollment, the standard process applies. That's the system that we've been under since 2011, '12, that's the system we're under today, and we have opted out of open enrollment for the last two years. We find that our regular PPS lottery is sufficient because we're open to non-resident students and we take kids in through, through those parameters. It saves us from having to have a whole other lottery with different weights in it or no weights in it, we just do it all at once. We've noted that there's very, very limited space for out-of-district students, and so it wouldn't be any point of entering into open enrollment if we don't have more space for kids. So unless we're willing to open up a lot more space, which would be for PPS kids to transfer all around first before, then we wouldn't be able to get to the non-residents. And then, as I mentioned, there was a concern that's been raised about the inability to revoke transfers over time. So we haven't let anyone in through this particular system. The numbers that you see in the chart details how many kids who have come in or gone out through our standard process, and it also details the numbers that have gone out through the open enrollment process that's been in effect for two years. So over those two years cumulatively, 214 students have transferred to other districts and now can remain in those districts through 12th grade. PPS doesn't have any part in the approval process. So that's why we've been on open enrollment to date. Staff's recommendation to you is that we continue to opt out of open enrollment for the 2014-15 school year, and there's a draft resolution that you can review at some point and send comments back on, and that's what you would be voting on towards the end of this month. So that's the only real action item, but what, but, but we also wanted to let you know that the legislature continues to delve pretty deeply into inter-district transfer issues, and this past spring, in June 2013, approved a bill HB 2747. We don't have a better name for it than I know of, so it's just 2747. In addition to that bill, which I'll give you a little bit of the highlights of, they are also looking at additional language to change inter-district transfers, so it's, it's a bit of a modification of 2747 in this special session. So right now in February, the legislature is again going, and I know this is not what people are talking about because they have a lot of other important issues that are making the news, but somewhere buried in all of that will be additional guidance on our inter-district transfers. HB 2747 is not designed to sunset, so it's the way that our system will work until the legislature chooses to change it again. It will impact all of our district, inter-district transfer agreements, so it isn't just for one little period of time, it's all, all kids that cross district lines all year long. It is also a blind system, so in the future, students seeking inter-district transfer must only provide their name, contact information, date of birth and grade. Any additional information about those students cannot be considered. So right now, in our regular process, we could have a student, say, request outside of the lottery to come to Madison High School, and there's an application for it, and we can request academic information on that student. So you're going to be a junior next year. How are your credits looking? How are you doing in school? And if we find that the student is really far behind where we would expect an incoming 11th grader to be, for example, we can choose to not approve that applicant. We can just choose to say at Madison at this time, you know, we're, we've got enough students in that category, and so Madison isn't going to be open to transfer for you right. So that's just an example of what we have the right to say now. We don't say it all the time, most of the kids who apply get approved, but we get to know a little bit about them beforehand, and we've seen that as helpful. However, it, it isn't helpful in all circumstances, obviously, it's not what the legislature would have us do in the future. So in the future, we can't know those things, and we'll be, we just won't know. So in terms of our lottery, our weights that are in place right now will not be able to apply to non-resident students in the future. So there's a lot of things that we've looked at before, rightly or wrongly, that we won't be doing in the future. So what does that mean? And then there, there may be other changes. So there's other things about whether we have to run a lottery for students who are already in the system, who move and want to stay to the highest grade, like there's a number of other questions that are not fully answered because we didn't get technical guidance on 2747 in the fall because they knew that they were going to special session. So having said all that, what I really do want to make you aware of and I, is that we've decided to limit our lotteries that are open now to resident students only. They would normally be open to non-residents, but they're not compliant with these laws yet. And so we're having a lottery right now, we'll have our resident applicants in that. As soon as we get the guidance that we need, so March into April, we will run a separate lottery for non-resident students who want to come into our schools. That will be limited to the schools that don't fill in the PPS lottery, which makes sense, and is probably more reasonable what the, the real chances are. A school like Kelly Russian Immersion Program that has a number of students that come in from out of district is likely to still be open for students who are native Russian speakers, but that won't happen until later, and that, that's a, a school and a community that I know is very curious about this. So the idea of having a separate lottery is compliant with HB 2747, but it's outside of that open enrollment timeframe. So you might be thinking, well, if you're going to hold a separate lottery, why not just make it part of that open enrollment thing that you just told us isn't a good idea? Well, the, the challenge we have there is you have to both say that you're going to be open, that we're going to be open, and how many spaces we have, and you have to do that by March 1st. And by March 1st, we're not going to know where we expect to have space. We may fill things up with resident students that we can't anticipate. So it's a timing problem and one that we would recommend you don't get stuck in, so that's why we're still saying, staff recommendation is no to open enrollment. We have a number of other forms, procedures that are going to have to be modified, and we would expect that we'll follow up with you on that, just to keep you aware of it. There may be other actionable items that we would like you to be aware of and, and give us advice and hopefully support on. In the big picture, how we handle inter-district should be folded into the policy work that SACIT is doing, and you'll also get updates from that. So that's the status of the inter-district world as I can define it right now, and I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
Any questions? Director Morton?
Just probably a quick one. So I'm looking at the inter-district transfer in and out of PPS this document, and I'm curious, there's a note at the bottom that says, did it not include transfers into PPS charter schools? Do we have an idea of what that number might be?
Yeah, it's about 12%. So I think that is, I had a note on it that I left on my desk. I think it's about 100, and it's between 180 and 200 of our PPS charter students come from other districts.
Come from other districts. And how about, I'm assuming, since there isn't a note here, that students that participate in our alternative-based programs are counted through their home, home high school or their home school, or are those counted at all in transfers? Because I know there are several who have come through from other, other districts.
So PPS alternatives?
Right.
So for example, a student at Meek would be included in these numbers.
Okay.
A student who's in one of the programs that we contract with would likely have a, yeah, they would likely have a contract with that other district. So that, that's how students from other districts would come, through that contracting process where they're setting slots as, as a separate agency.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Okay. Other questions? Director Buell? Or, excuse me, Director Blough?
I just have a question about, do we, I'm sure you have data, but it's not presented here, about who participates in the inter-district, and are we disproportionately affecting one group over the other, or is one take, one group taking more advantage of it? I'd just be curious how that plays out and who gets impacted or who we might be creating barriers for.
That's a great question. We haven't run a report on that. We've had different database systems for this particular kind of work over the years, so I just don't know that we've had the same level of data, but we certainly could. So I will tell you anecdotally, it's a very mixed group of kids, and if, I, I won't attempt to define it by race right now, but I think, you know, you can see from the districts that are affected that we, our biggest relationship is our districts on the east, and we know that those are, tend to be higher poverty areas and higher poverty districts, so that's a flavor for it, but it's all kids. And, and family mobility matters, so it's, it's both families who might be apt to move more, might be as part of this process, but then you also have the transportation burden. So there may be some families who would love to stay in the resident district but don't have transportation to do it. So there's a lot more mobility than inter-district transfers pick up, and that's possibly a reflection of, of challenges like transportation.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For helping to clarify that very confusing lottery system that we have. Appreciate it. Okay, on to our next agenda item on food allergies, a presentation. I'm sure everybody knows, over the past couple of months, Director Buell's raised the issue of one child's allergies to peanut butter in an effort to educate the board and the public regarding how the district and our staff work with students and their families to limit exposure to foods that they may be allergic to. We've asked the staff to prepare information on the topic. Superintendent Smith, would you like to introduce this further?
Yes, and I'll ask John Isaacs, who's Senior Policy Advisor, and Gita Brother Sweeney, who is our Director of Child Nutrition Services, to come on up to answer questions. And what we've provided to the board is both our administrative directive on life-threatening allergies as well as what our internal protocols are. This is a complex question and one that we've looked to national entities who advise on this topic. So anyway, we wanted to provide the board with the information about what it is that we actually do, allow you guys to ask questions, and John and Gita, I'm going to ask you to come on up. And I'm really going to do this as availability to answer questions, which the board has as a result of the packets that you've received.
And I'll just add, we have a number of staff here can answer a number of questions if you have them, so.
No presentation?
No, we did not come with a planned presentation, but we're here available to answer any questions any board members might have.
Okay, okay. Well, first of all, I just want to say thank you very much for preparing this and for providing the policy directives and administrative directives as well. It was very helpful, so thank you very much. So, questions? Director Morton?
My hand was getting tired. Thank you for the information that, that you provided in our packet. I think it was pretty thorough. I did come away with a couple of questions that I wanted to see if I could specifically get answered, and hopefully there, it's not too specific to what you can actually speak to tonight. So one of those was, I'm, I'm very specifically looking for the implications of So, one of those was, I'm very specifically looking for the implications of the information that you shared with us in our packets for Hollyrood. And since that has been the school that we've talked a lot about and has been, has been on the forefront of this conversation, there are two other components of that, that, I can repeat these, but I'll get them out right now. But the first one is, what food would we actually stop offering, and really, what would it be replaced with? So, that's one. And I think that the other piece that I'm really curious about is, some things are, we don't actually consider, might, some changes in food, we don't actually consider might create other challenges. So, the answer to the first question, hopefully, will lead to the answer of the second question of what do we then need to consider if food has changed at this campus?
Let me just, just to clarify, you're asking if the food were changed from food that PPS serves that has nuts as an ingredient to an alternate food?
Right.
Okay, just to clarify that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I was going to ask the same question. So, yes, currently, we're serving lunch at Hollyrood, and so, two of the main things that we'd have to stop serving are peanut butter sandwiches, and then also, any food that is made in a plant that processes peanuts or has peanuts in it, which would be the granola. Even though the granola doesn't per se have nuts in it, it's made in a plant that processes nuts.
And so, I've seen those tags, that this might contain nuts.
Right, right, right. And so, if we were to replace those foods, we're required by the USDA, the school lunch program, to serve certain components. And so, by eliminating specifically the peanut butter sandwiches, we would have to replace it with another protein and another grain, a whole grain product. And so, some of the things that we have looked at replacing, number one, would be like a cheese sandwich, which we could do, and, but we open it up to kids that have milk allergies, can't necessarily have cheese, so we'd have to deal with that. So, we'd be replacing it with another allergy. Meat, we had also looked at doing some meat sandwiches. However, at Hollyrood, we're serving one hot item, and so, peanut butter and the yogurt meal, that we call it the yogurt meal, is the other vegetarian option. So, if we replace it with a meat sandwich, then I'm taking away another vegetarian choice. And also, there are kids that are allergic to meat. Some other things that we've looked at are soy butter, and soy is, just like a peanut butter, it's supposed to be like the same type of product or looking, type product, and it has, it's made with soybeans, and that's also one of the top eight allergens. Then the other one is sun butter, and it's made with sunflower seeds. And a lot of kids that are allergic to peanuts are also allergic to seeds, and so, that wouldn't be a great choice. The other thing that we also weighed is, we always have to have some sort of emergency meal, like last week when we lost power at a school and we still had to serve a meal. We are able to, because these are prepackaged, pre-made and frozen, we can pull those out, and we're able to feed kids very quickly when we don't have electricity or if we don't have water. So, looking at meat or cheese sandwich, I wouldn't be able to do that. We also use the sandwiches for field trips because they don't have to be refrigerated. If, some of the alternatives we're looking at would have to be refrigerated and kept cold in some fashion. So, those are some of the alternatives we've looked at and, or, you know, weighed the pros and cons to.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think it did. I think it was a, it was a sort of a ping pong of maybe this, but this is what it would open us up to, so, thank you.
Director Blau?
So, again, the issue I keep hearing about specifically, and what I think Director Buell keeps raising specifically, is the situation at Hollyrood. And I know that Hollyrood and Beverly Cleary, or Beverly Cleary School, Fernwood Campus, Hollyrood Campus, has been just growing, and so, I think we just recently did some kind of enrollment relief for them next year. And I feel like some of this, if I understand the issue correctly, is a result of, we built out the cafeteria so that we could involve, so that we could have classroom space for students. Did what we just approved, will that address any of this concern, or will it alleviate this concern? Maybe not for this year.
Why don't we have Carl Logan, who's here, who's the Regional Administrator for Hollyrood?
Oh, that, it was a suggestion, I'm sorry. What we considered last year.
No, I think we can have Carl come up and address that question. And what we're doing in our, we're just making the information available for you as you consider what you want to do, but Carl can speak to that question.
Yeah, so, the answer is yes. The recommendation for next year, and it's, we're using the word cafeteria, it's a classroom that's used as a cafeteria.
Okay, thank you.
And so, we would go back to last school year, where they did have a classroom that was used, the purpose of it was used for a cafeteria, and so, that, next year, that would be true also.
That's if we approved the recommendation.
Correct.
You approved that, correct?
If we approved the recommendation, the staff. I had my head that we had approved it, but I'm ahead of us again.
We did things last year, and then everything filled up even beyond that, so they're coming back, they're looking at other options. So, I'm sorry, you're saying that even though Hollywood never, never has had a full cafeteria in the traditional sense, there had been a classroom dedicated for the use as a place to eat and serve food.
Right, correct.
And so, under some of the proposals we're looking at next year to help relieve the overcrowding, Hollywood would once again have that space available.
Correct.
The classroom space to dedicate for serving and eating food.
So, it will eliminate the situation we have now, where kids are eating all of their meals in their classrooms.
Right.
Correct.
The other question I have is, I didn't see much on this, but again, staff's been really forthcoming with information, and I got to learn something new about 504 plans. But I guess I'm not exactly sure, like, can you talk to me about how they're developed or where they come from, who qualifies, and what did they actually do? Again, I've read through maybe one in my life, but it raised some questions for me.
Let me, I'm going to actually ask Jolly Patterson, our General Counsel, to come and address that question.
I've got a whole crew.
I'm Jolly Patterson, General Counsel for the district. So, 504 is part of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973, and what it provides is that when you have a student who has a mental or physical impairment that substantially limits a major life activity, the school district has to provide accommodations for that student. So, when one of those students is identified, the school district puts together a team that includes, it depends on the nature of the disability, but school staff, parents, medical professionals, and designs a specific accommodation plan for that student so they can participate in the activities of the school. So, that's essentially what a 504 plan is. So, we do have 504 plans for some of our students who have severe allergies.
What do those generally look like?
It depends on the specific situation, so whether it is providing a certain space for that student to eat in, or within the classroom, providing certain hand washing and table cleaning accommodations. It depends on the nature and the severity of the allergy. They're very tailored to individual students.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, go ahead.
Do we, do we pick who's on that team, or how's that team assembled?
The law delineates who needs to be on that team, so it depends on the student's, the nature of the disability, whether it's a, if the accommodations require that the school counselor be there, or the classroom teacher, the principal. Every school has a 504 coordinator, so the 504 coordinator is there. The parent is always invited and if they have, and involved, and as, and then depending, again, on the nature of the, of the physical or mental impairment, we either will have an MESD nurse, we'll solicit information from the student's medical providers, so it just depend, the exact nature of the team depends on the specific nature.
Thank you.
So, just to follow up on that, is that in addition to all of the responsibilities that are listed in the AD that we have in front of us, or that was in our packet? So, that's even expanded beyond the, how many are here? Of 12 different things that we look at?
Correct.
For that, okay, great. All right. Other questions? Director Buell?
Do you need, Jolly, maybe sell a minor for Ms. Grether-Sweeney? I don't have questions for you, for Jolly. I have for John and for Sweeney. I have your report here. Thank you very much for that. It's a long report, and it has to do with the way that we treat food allergies across the entire district, which I think, sounds to me like, and would you categorize that as, whether Sweeney is doing it, that we're working on that and trying to work with that, and that that's a priority of yours?
Can you ask the question again?
Dealing with food allergies across the entire district, is that something we look at and care about and pay attention to?
Yes.
I assume that it would be, and you put that as a high, high priority?
Safety students always is.
Good, and the, the report that we got, in the first two paragraphs, let me just see if I can read the first line. Portland Public School practices are aligned with national recommendations from the Center of Disease Control and Prevention, and the Food Allergy and Anaphylaxis Network, and other national policy guides. So, what we're doing across the district is aligned with these national organizations. None of those national organizations have any place in your research, John, having to do with a K-1 school that doesn't have a cafeteria, where you send in peanut butter and jelly sandwiches. None of them have to do with that, correct? I mean, I just want to, I just want to take the, what we're talking about and put that forward. There's no place where you came across a similar situation to Beverly Cleary in your.
There's certainly broad policy recommendations that are the responsibility of the school district to develop district-wide policies and apply them, given the situation and scenario as we.
Yeah, yeah, and there are, that's what it is, broad policy recommendations that really have nothing to do whatsoever with Beverly Cleary School and the situation there. Now, I feel that, Ms. Grether-Sweeney, you're kind of, you've become kind of the sacrificial lamb here for the school board, to a certain degree. I'd be okay with me if you headed out of here, and I kept asking John questions, because the ones I have coming up aren't really very good ones, I don't think. They're not very pleasant ones. And so, I, you know, if I'd be okay with the superintendent, maybe you could head out, and we'll ask questions, we'll ask the hard questions to John, because he's, but it's up to you. Is she okay? Are you okay? She's, you're okay with staying and answering the questions? Okay. So, what we got here is, is we have a situation that's, you're saying that we could send in other sandwiches. You understand how to do that. You can put that together yourself. You could put that together if the school board or the superintendent said, send in something other than peanut butter and jelly sandwiches. You could handle that in your job? That wouldn't be a problem for you? Could figure that out, or is it, what is it? Is that right? You could do that?
Of course.
Yeah, you could do that, and you wouldn't have to send in all of the same type of sandwiches, would you? Because if a kid has a milk allergy, you wouldn't have to replace it with fruit and a milk. Milk has protein, doesn't it?
We have to meet the components of a reimbursable.
Some component, right, but I noticed in the Utahs, in the Utah school system where they had that, where they're taking the kids, the stuff back from the kids, the food back from the kids, they said that they had a fruit and a milk was what they gave them. So, were they breaking the federal law?
I'm not familiar with that.
Oh, so you're not, well, but I mean, no, Utah's a, it would be, it's a federal law, right, isn't it? Isn't our laws, the food program, federal laws, not state?
Yes, they are.
So, Utah was breaking the federal law, or is it okay for us to send in fruit and a milk?
I can't speak to that, because I don't, I don't know their situation.
You don't know the federal law, though?
I do know the federal law.
Is it okay to send in a fruit and a, fruit and a milk?
She's saying she doesn't know that situation specifically?
If I were just sending.
No, but I mean, here in Oregon, would it be breaking the law in Oregon if we did that?
If I just sent a milk and fruit, it would not be able to be counted as a reimbursable meal, no.
So, well, we would have to pay for it ourselves. We could do it, but we'd have to pay for it ourselves?
We'd have to figure that out, but that's not a meal.
No, but it's not, neither is peanut butter and jelly sandwich a meal either, if it's white bread and it's got, I mean, and read the back of those Smucker's peanut butter and jelly sandwiches? I mean, I couldn't figure out where to buy one, because they won't sell them in the stores that I've found. Is there any place they sell those? I mean, they've got a lot of junk in it, and it's not a very good meal. It's white bread, right? Greasy peanut butter, some jelly, with a lot of sugar. I mean, that's not really a very good meal, but we're sending that out throughout. That's our nutrition, that's our choice, is to send out those.
Can we go ahead and just try and keep this related to the allergy question?
Yeah, I am. This is very, this is related specifically to Beverly Cleary, which is on the allergy.
What is the allergy-related question that you just asked, Director Buell?
The allergy-related question is, is that a, we were talking about whether it's a good meal or not.
Right.
And I said, she said that wasn't a meal, and I'm saying, that's not a meal, fruit? Which would you rather feed your children, fruit and a milk, or one of those peanut butter, Smucker's peanut butter and jelly sandwiches, which are loaded with all sorts of junk? I mean, if it was my child, I'd rather feed him one than the other. I was just trying to see if that was legal.
I'm still missing the allergy piece to that, but.
It's a, yeah, because I'm trying to decide if we can send in a decent meal, other than peanut butter and jelly, or even a peanut butter and jelly meal. I'm really not arguing with you. You want to do, deal with this in a way. If you want to argue, you and me, we'll do that next, but I'm asking a question still.
So, I feel like that Gita did a good job of outlining the answer to that question and Director Morton's question about the options.
Okay.
She asked for the options of what federal guidelines would require us to do if the board directed staff to serve a meal alternate to a food option that contains nuts as a ingredient, and she outlined the choices we would have under federal guidelines.
Okay, so, so, what we're talking about is three to 20 sandwiches, correct? I mean, that's really, this whole thing, all of this that we've got, all of the allergy things, all of what we're doing, is really three to 20 sandwiches in this one school. Correct, John? In fact, John, you said that you thought I was right, that we shouldn't send those sandwiches into this school. You told me that. So, are you saying, are you changing your mind, or do you think that's correct, that we shouldn't send those sandwiches in to that school that has the child, where if they happen to get that peanut butter on them, which happens to be very sticky, this is a major problem here, you've got sticky peanut butter stuff. This is not, this is not like you have a muffin that we talked about. This is actually really sticky stuff, and so, it sticks, it can stick any place in the school. So, if you take your, if you take a spoon, you have the, this sticks to things. This sticks to stuff. That's a lot of the problem. And if you happen to get it on the bottom of a table, not on the top, but on the bottom, and nobody sees it to clean it off, then that little kid sticks his hand down there and gets that on his hand, doesn't even know it, because it's sticking every place in that building that it goes off, and those are sticky sandwiches, and those sandwiches crumple. Then what happens is, this kid dies. This is not a milk allergy, there's kids with milk allergies. This is not a, an allergy where the kid gets a tummy ache. This is where this child dies, based on that we can't figure out how to send less than 20 sandwiches into this school.
So, I would like to say, we aren't, we don't know, because we haven't been directed through board action to serve an alternate meal, so we don't know the number. And obviously, if that, if the board chose to take that action, we would find that information. Now, I also would like to address that I don't recall, I personally don't recall having told you my opinion about that. I have said to you that I think it's a question worth looking at, and that we would prepare answers for the board if the board would like us to answer questions.
And it's also true, is it not?
Can I actually ask them, would you describe what the protocols are that we are using at Hollyrood? Because effort has gone into figuring out a way that we are exercising a protocol at Hollyrood to keep safety in the school.
Correct. And I want to ask, I actually would like Carl to come back up.
And Carl would be great to come up, because both in terms of what's the protocol in our regular schools, in the lunchroom when we have a cafeteria, and what's the protocol in Hollyrood where we are absent of cafeteria, because there have been very specific steps taken in order to ensure safety here. Because there have been very specific steps taken in order to ensure safety here.
So this is Ms. Newlin, who is the AP at Hollyrood, and she's gonna share about the procedures and the protocols that we've put in place.
I've been very thoughtful. Our administrative team has been very thoughtful about how to prepare for lunch service minus a cafeteria. Typically, in a cafeteria, we would have a table where children who are allergic to peanut butter in particular, because that's a more broadly allergic food item in the cafeteria, would sit safely away from others who are eating peanut butter. So we have a microcosm of that in the classrooms in which we eat. We have one classroom in particular where we have modified that because of the allergy need. So we do not allow peanut, tree nuts, seeds, hummus, any obvious allergen items into that classroom. I've also developed a color-coded sanitation system so that as we clean tables, green, broadly in the school, green rags are used on tables where students may have eaten peanut butter at a table. And red rags would be used for tables where students who are eating at a safe table, so that there's not cross-contamination. So in, in one classroom in particular, all of the rags are red so that it's known that there's no cross-contamination with allergen products. We also have wet wipes outside the classroom so that students who have eaten outside the classroom a peanut product do not enter the classroom with peanut buttery fingers to spread within the classroom. All students are asked to wash hands before and after they eat so that teachers and staff are asking students and making sure that kids who have eaten peanut butter and jelly or any other food item of issue have washed their hands before they go to the bathroom, to any of the other rooms in the school. Small school, so not very many places that they're gonna go where they would cross-contaminate, but including the playground.
Director Buell?
I just want to thank you for really the wonderful job that the staff has done at, oh, at Hollyrood, at Beverly Cleary at Hollyrood. I have talked many times to parents out there, particularly to Gracie Cunningham. And she has nothing but nice things to say about the job that you're doing. No one in a million years thinks you're doing anything other than a really good job. In fact, that's the problem. You're doing a wonderful job. The parents are doing a wonderful job. Everybody's working together to make sure we don't kill this little first grader. Except one place, us. We're doing a terrible job. We keep sending in and causing all this kind of, I mean, even the disruption, what you've described, the different rags and everything and all this extra fuss that you have to take, could all be taken care of to a huge degree by just sending in a different sandwich. Ten different sandwiches takes care of the whole problem. That's all anybody's ever asked for. No one, Ms. Cunningham has, all last year, never, did you remember her coming last year and having when you had a cafeteria?
I've worked closely with Ms. Cunningham for several hours now.
She didn't, wasn't there all the time making a fuss, right? She was fine with that. And it, it wasn't really a problem. This year, it's a problem because you have this one child who, if you're going to put peanut butter throughout this whole school, because of course you're gonna make him, you know, it's possible to make a mistake, right? I mean, you can't guarantee that you're not going to make a mistake and kill this young child. No, no way can you guarantee that. In fact, you've already made a couple mistakes. I know, I know that. I've talked to people, you know, giving the wrong kid a peanut butter sandwich, not this kid, but other kids. I mean, it happens. I, as a school teacher, know that you don't, Mr. Logan, you taught school, didn't you? So in your classroom, did you know what all the kids were doing all the time? No way, did you? Not even close. A kid could be shooting spitwads for a week before you catch him. You don't know. Those mistakes can happen. So why do we want to create a situation where we can make those mistakes when this is totally different? What we're doing kinda, it's like, it's, it's like you take your young child and you let him cross the street in front of your house over to grandmother's across on the street that you know, maybe in your cul-de-sac. That's the regular way that we're working with it. Your kid could get run over crossing that street. Nobody thinks that that's not the case. Your kid can get run over, period. We know that. Everybody knows that. You can come down, a guy, the neighbor guy gets drunk and comes down and runs, but you still let him cross the street. But you don't let your child, who's five years old, walk down several blocks and cross Powell Boulevard during rush hour. It's not a matter of letting your kid cross the street. It's not a matter of what we're doing throughout the district. It's a matter of what you're doing in that one spot. And to have us send in peanut buttered sandwiches all over that school, where you can make the mistake, where it can end up on the bottom, are you cleaning the bottoms of the desks? I bet you're not cleaning the bottoms of those, are you? No? And it can end up down there, and that is the thing that kills that kid. There isn't, and...
Director Buell?
Or, yep, I'm still, I'm still talking.
No, I know. I'm just, you keep asking questions, but you never pause to let them answer.
Well, it really wasn't a question, that was more a statement.
So do you have a question for this group?
Yeah, I guess. If you want me to go back and do a question, I'd rather just make another, I'd rather, kinda broke my rhythm here, but... So, Mr. Logan then. What do you personally recommend? If you had a child and it was yours, your first grader, and you had a grandchild, say, or a child, would you want him to send those peanut butter and jelly sandwiches? Or would you want him to change out? Which would you take? You'd say, "Send him peanut butter and jelly, 'cause it's familiar"?
You know, I could speak to, because I know the school, I, I would feel comfortable with my child being at Hollyrood.
And this, and this teacher's...
And I think the, the parent has done a really good job in educating her child and him being an advocate for himself. And I think the parent's done a good job in educating the whole community. And so what I wouldn't want is to give a false sense of, of security where I know that's not where we're at right now. I know he doesn't have a, a false sense of security.
Right. Nor does a parent, right?
Right, right.
But you, but, so I don't know how that affects what we're doing. I don't know what, I don't understand what the actual problem of changing the sandwiches out are. Fairly difficult to some degree, fine. But would you, do you have any, any kids that if they get a little peanut butter in their mouth, they're dead?
So I'm gonna just interject here that one of the pieces of information we provided in the background is that in the, in the district, we're managing for a hundred and sixty different food allergies. And part of what the national experts recommend is that part of what you're doing is teaching, teaching people to deal with it, to deal with it and not, as Carl Logan just suggested, creating a false sense of security by, by banning something that you in fact aren't able to really control for. So even if you're not serving something, you are, kids are bringing their own lunch, you're really not able to control for it. You know, things are being consumed in classrooms. Part of what we've done as a management plan in the district is, as we've said in cafeterias, we do a nut-free table where kids are eating, who cannot have nuts, are eating nut-free. In this school, we've done nut-free classroom. We actually have examined where are places that we're actually serving breakfast or snacks or lunch in classrooms across the entire district? Because we have kids with peanut allergies across the entire district. It's not a single school issue. And part of what the national experts, and we've heard from many parents who have kids with allergies, who are saying it's actually more dangerous to do a peanut-free school or claim that you've got an allergy-free zone because you can't in fact ensure that. So you lull kids into a false sense of security. And the way that the national recommended practice is that you are teaching someone to handle this in environments that they're going to be in their entire life. So that's really the approach that we've taken. And the school has been incredibly responsive in terms of, again, education of the, the school community, the staff community. They've been working with nutrition services about knowing the ingredients, about working on how you contain and keep a classroom free of this particular ingredient. And that's, that's basically how we've handled it. We've also done inquiry into other school districts that have dealt with the same issue, some of whom have already gone to, at trying to go nut-free and then going back from that and saying, "Okay", created a whole different set of complexities that you back off from quickly once you understand what they are. So anyway, this is actually, Director Buell's questions have really led us to, you know, examine where else is this happening? Who else is grappling with it? And, you know, do we feel confident about the way that we're handling it? And I also would like to just thank the Hollyrood staff for, for how you have handled it. And thank Gita for how you have been handling this situation, so, and the support that other players have played in making sure that we feel confident about how we're ensuring the safety of every one of our kids, so...
May I continue on since I was interrupted?
You just wait. Director Curler?
Just a couple, just a couple follow-up questions. So, so is it, is it right, Superintendent, that the, that the best practice is in a situation where there's no cafeteria? Because I mean, I clearly get when there's a cafeteria...
What you do.
Yeah, and that it seems like the best practice is having the table. And under that scenario, that it appears like the best practice is not to ban. But that, that that's also the case for a situation like, like Hollyrood?
So Hollyrood is the only school we have that does not have a cafeteria, so it's a unique circumstance.
Which it will next year, right?
But if, and again, we've got a enrollment balancing issue that a decision will be before you, that if in fact you make that decision, then we will be back to having a classroom that's designated as the cafeteria, cafeteria in a small building. But, so that, that this is part of what's required. The conversations that we've been having is, it is a cap, it's a school that does not have refrigeration and does not have a formal cafeteria. So some of the options that sound like really straightforward, why aren't we doing, you know, this, that, or the other? That would require refrigeration, that's the added challenge. So the scenario of having the classroom in which this student is eating be nut-free has been the solution that has been worked out at this particular school, similar to a nut-free table in a school that had a cafeteria. So... But that's the additional challenge of this situation, is a school with, absent a cafeteria.
And I'd just like to clarify one thing, which is if the board were to take action where the peanut, the food options served by the district with peanuts as a, as an ingredient were removed, the management plan at the school would still need to stay in place because you can never guarantee that it is quote-unquote "nut-free". There are still many ways that nuts come into the school. So that by itself would not solve the problem and would, the, the, the great plan that the staff has developed and is managing would continue to stay in place. Just wanna make sure that's clear.
So has this student been subject to that plan for, what, a first grader, second grader? Okay.
First graders.
Yeah. All right. Did you have, Director Morton?
Yeah, I guess kind of a statement, not much, but question, but something that did strike me that, that Carl mentioned. I think the first thing, for me, I, I really want to thank the, the staff and, and certainly the families at the school who have been so diligent. You know, as a district, we will never relinquish the responsibility of creating a safe environment to learn in. And, and I feel like with all of the players involved, the staff at the school, even the district staff and certainly the parents, we're, we're achieving that safe environment. I don't have a child with a peanut allergy. So I, I don't know exactly everything that would go. I have friends who have, actually friends at Abernathy who have a similar, similar situation. And EpiPens are all around and so on. But, but I do have a child who has a congenital heart defect that could cause instant cardiac arrest. So one of the things, Carl, that you said really struck me, and that's the, maybe both of you said it, but that's the responsibility that the parent has taken in educating their child to be safe. And, and to recognize signs and to, I'm, I'm assuming, I don't, I'm assuming this is, but, but these are all the things that, that I've, I've talked to my son about too, is recognizing signs. And if you're tired, you sit down. And, and so I want to, you know, on the one hand, I, I want to say we'll never relinquish that responsibility as a, to, to maintain a safe environment. But on the other hand, I am so happy to hear that the parents are taking the responsibility to educate their child to make sure that they're safe. And that's one thing that we need to maybe not discount is the ability of that individual child, albeit a young child, to understand that there are, when they, when maybe they reach under a desk and they feel something sticky, that they know that they have to wash their hands. Or that they know they have to be excused and say, "Something's on my hands." Or perhaps they, the parent provides them with antiseptic wipes so they can be responsive or they know that they need to talk to the teacher about that. So I, I don't want us to discount that and that responsibility that it sounds like the, the parents have done a very good job in, in, in instilling in their child.
Director Buell?
The stuff that Carol said is not relevant to what we're talking about. We're not talking about the district policy dealing with children who have allergies. We're talking about a specific case and a specific child. It's totally different. We're talking about how safe, how safe should we make this child? We can, no one believes that we can make that school totally safe. Kid can come in, no one believes that. The question is, how far are we willing to go to safeguard that child? Are we willing to allow that child to be in an environment where we have things that can kill them? Sweeney says, "We can go ahead and do it. It's not a problem and it won't affect the other kids." And we've got the parents and we've got all the people here who are in the school, doing a wonderful job. So why don't we not send it in? Can you give me a reason? Could anybody of the four of you give me a reason why we don't just change those ten sandwiches to something else to make it work for this school? Is there anybody who can give me a reason that has to do with the school? Not generalized stuff? Can anybody say, "Oh, yeah, yeah, Steve"?
Would you please let them answer the question? You're asking the same question like six different ways.
I'd say two things to answer this question. I'd say two things to answer this question. And I'd like to say that I, it's unclear to me again whether we would make the school safer based on experts we've heard on and parents of other children with food allergies. We've actually heard both opinions. We've heard the opinion that it would make the school safer. We've actually heard the opinion from experts and other parents that we would make the situation less safe because we would create a false sense of safety in the school. So I'm just saying that that is, to me, in my experience looking at the issue, not a clear question. Of course, people are going to have different opinions. Within the policies that we have, that we are required to manage to right now, both board policy, district policy, and federal food policy, we have developed, led by the staff at Hollyrood, the most aggressive plan at the school. Now, the questions that we answered from the board tonight were meant to be responsive to requests that you've made, Director Buell, so that if the board would like to consider making a, a decision that would, you know, require us to take further action there by moving food with nuts as an ingredient and replacing them with some of the options that our Director of Nutrition Services laid out, that would be an option you could take.
Yeah, good, yeah.
Director Belile?
Director Buell, I actually have a question for you because I've heard you say this and maybe, maybe you're just getting going and you don't mean this exactly, but, and I think I've asked this to you before, so, so I hope I'm not surprising you, but.
No, you can surprise me all you want. Great. Yes.
Just kidding. My question is, the statement's been made that if this child so much as touches or comes in contact with peanut butter, they will die.
No, no, the statement is that they could die. I'm sorry if I said they will die, but I, they could die, he could die, and that's the actual.
By touching it?
Yes, that's what the pediatrician of the child says, that it is a possibility. He goes in his.
So, I'm sorry, so if he comes in contact, it's a possibility he will die, or he could die?
It's a possibility, no, it's a possibility. It's a possibility. And the other thing is though, that, that if, yeah, but it's a good, it's a good question. The other thing is if he gets just a little bit and that goes into his mouth, then that's, we're not talking, we're talking a little bit. Yeah, and that goes into his mouth, he's, he's, there's a good chance he's gone. This child is dead and they, and all the, having all these people helping out here, the nurses and the physician, and they talk about this team, that team ain't there. That kid's going to die, and that kid could die really fast.
Director Atkins? I just want to say I really appreciate all the information from the variety of staff and the background information and the questions and concerns raised by Director Buell. But I would just request, we've got good information here, we've gotten that information, and I think we request that we move on with our agenda at this point, with thanks to staff.
That was exactly my next comment. Very good lead in. So thank you very much to staff. I appreciate, I appreciate your coming forward. It looks, it, you know, thank you very much for all of the work you're doing at Hollyrood and with the parent and the student. And again, we just really appreciate you coming forward tonight and helping us explain or helping us understand what's all that's entailed in this very complex situation. So thank you again.
I'd like to make a motion. Thank you. I'd like to move that we make Hollyrood, that we make, I would move that we make Beverly Clary at Hollyrood a nut free school.
Okay, Director Buell has moved that we make Hollyrood at Beverly Clary a nut free school. Is there a second to that motion?
Meaning that we don't send stuff in is the intent of that motion.
Until they get a cafeteria, or what's your time?
No, just, yes, for the rest of the, remainder of the year. Thank you. Want me to change that motion to add remainder of the year?
Okay.
I'd like to move that we make Beverly Clary at Hollyrood a nut free school for the remainder of the year. And declare an emergency.
Is there a second for that?
Yes, I'll, I'll second it.
Okay. Any other discussion?
So what would we be sending in if we made it a nut free school in its place?
There's things that, that Ms. Grace, Grace Sweeney said we could. She would become the decision maker for that. She said it's not, she can take care of that.
So if we pass this resolution, then?
Shilts and then other, a different type of sandwich.
Okay, and those are ready to go as in as soon as we pass this, they can be sent in? There's no delay time?
I don't know, I'm not going to complain if it takes a day or two.
So if you look within your memo that we received, you'll see that doing something like that would be a cost of $63,000 to the district. And so it would take us some time to get some of the things, specifically, I think it's, well, I'm going to have to ask. Refrigeration back in and other things for that.
I'd like to speak to that.
Director Belile?
Go ahead.
So if, if there are additional costs, this is just actually a point of clarification. My understanding is we can't introduce a motion on the same night that we're expending funds and approve that motion, so just.
So I declared an emergency in the motion.
I, I didn't hear that in the original motion.
This is also not a policy change.
I heard him say it, so. Any other, Director Buell?
It's not 63,000. Put a refrigerator in there tomorrow for $50.
Make it at the district wide.
And, yes, they're going to destroy, it's a, it's a minimal, almost, it's a minimal, minimal, yeah, minimal, minimal cost here in order to do this. It's, it's not really, I don't know, maybe the other lunches cheaper that we figure out what to send in there, but I don't know, probably not, but, but it's not going to be much money. It's merely the fact that we're going to create, for the remainder of this year, we're going to say, okay, look, we're going to make this safer, much safer for this child. All this rigmarole about creating the, trying to say what people think about it, that it's, it's meaningless to this. It's merely all we're doing is lowering the chance of this child dying. That's all we're doing for almost no problem, and this is a real serious thing. I know two of you have young children. I know Matt has a young son, a great kid, I watch him. If this was his son, would he say, nah, keep sending the peanut butter every place? Or if this was Greg's children, there's a couple of children.
Director Buell, please keep my children out of the discussion.
Would you say, we'll just send the peanut butter every place? I don't think, I don't think, I don't think so. And I also ask to have, you know, there's one other thing that comes into play here which really bothers me. I asked about having a risk management come out and look because, you know, several million dollars if this kid would die. I mean, it's a huge risk management thing. And, and I don't understand why the superintendent would say, no, we're not going to do that. We can't do that risk management. That's not much of a cost. I don't get that. I don't, there's something going on here that has nothing to do with saving the life of this little child or making it safer. I don't, I don't get it, okay.
Excuse me, Director Belile?
I'd just like to call the question.
Okay. I don't think we have a resolution number either.
You'd have to assign it.
Not written, no.
Well, what is, what's? No, I'm looking for 4872 would be the, I'm thinking, okay, so. Okay, so the board will now vote on resolution 4872. All in favor, please.
Could we have a roll call?
Okay, sure. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes. Roll call vote, please. 4872.
And a yes means it's a nut free?
A yes means that it would be a nut free school.
Until there's a cafeteria?
Until the end of the year.
And the child wouldn't die. You'd be voting for that too.
The child.
Probably.
Enough. Director Atkins?
No.
Co-Chair Belile?
No.
Director Buell?
Yes.
Co-Chair Knowles?
No.
Director Kurler?
Yes.
Director Morton?
No.
Student representative?
Yes.
Resolution 4872 is not approved by a vote of, is lost by a vote of four to two, with student representative Davidson voting.
Yes.
Great. Okay, thank you again to all of the staff that was here, and thank you for the vigorous discussion. Appreciate that. Very complex issue that I think that our staff is working very hard to ensure the safety of all of our students, many, many students with life threatening allergies in our district, so. Okay, next agenda item, first reading revised public contracting rules. Superintendent Smith, would you like to introduce this item?
I would, and I'd like to ask Deputy CFO David Wine up as well as Elaine Baker to do this presentation.
Janelle's board members, Superintendent Smith, I'm happy to have Elaine Baker with us. Elaine is the program manager for purchasing and contracting. She's going to speak to this issue, but before she does so, I'm going to embarrass her by pointing out that Elaine has worked for Portland Public Schools for over eight and a half years. And I, it's with great, it's with very much mixed feelings that I tell you that she is leaving PPS to go to the city of Hillsborough. It's an important and highly appropriate life and career decision for her, but it's bad news for us. And she has done a truly outstanding job in the last 18 months as manager of this team, and it's important that we acknowledge that publicly. So I'm doing that now she can tell you about this purchasing rule change.
Congratulations on your new position and best wishes for you. And thank you for all your service for PPS.
Absolutely, thank you. And thank you, David, for the recognition. So we are here tonight to propose a change to our public contracting rules. The Oregon State Legislature reached, recently revised the public contracting code, which now allows us to update our dollar threshold for small purchases of goods and services from $5,000 to $10,000. We propose this update in order to take advantage of this option the state has provided. The legislature has made a few other minor changes to the code, and we're waiting on additional draft model rules from the state to guide us. We anticipate bringing before you a second update once we have those rules. And I welcome your questions.
Do you have a question, even though it is straightforward? It is, does this increase our exposure to things going awry? I'm thinking kind of standard operating procedures for controls and audits. And so now we're going to have more contracts that have less process to them, or just maybe explain that to me?
Sure.
And how we're dealing with it?
Right. I would see that this is a fairly low risk change. It's a change that in my experience in talking to other procurement people, procurement officials, that it's a change that other agencies are making. An update and an increase like this hasn't happened in 16 years. And so of course, you know, prices have gone up in that time and market has changed. And so that's, that's one of the reasons for the change.
So no, no additional procedures, standard operating procedures don't change with this?
Correct.
In terms of controls?
Correct.
Okay. And you don't see any need for that?
Any need for additional procedures? No. This is in the, in the scheme of things, this is a very minor change, but it does allow for greater operating efficiencies for our departments.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I do have a quick comment.
Director Morton?
Thanks. It actually isn't about this at all, but I wanted to, when you, when you came up, I was quickly reminded about the work that, that you had done with our policy around the M W E S B. Since you're leaving, may not get another opportunity. Thank you so much for that. And that is sort of one of those direct ways that we can impact the economy, particularly in women, minority, and small business, small emerging businesses here in, in the Portland area. So thank you for that. I know we're either at or, or surpassing our, some of our goals in that work, and I'm really excited to be, to be here on the board when that was, that was approved. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Director Morton.
Any other comments? The proposed policy is posted on the board website. The public comment period is 21 days, with the last day to comment being February 24th, 2014. Contact information for public comment will be posted with the policy, and the board will hold a second reading of the policy on February 24th, 2014. Again, thank you very much for the presentation. Thank you for your service and good luck.
Thank you. And I'm going to add my thank you to Elaine. You've just been awesome and provided tremendous leadership for the department, and I'm really glad Director Morton's acknowledgement of the equity in public purchasing and contracting policy, which was really your leadership. So thank you so much. We're going to miss you terribly. Thank you, Superintendent Smith.
Okay, on to our next agenda item presentation from the Multnomah Education Service District Local Service Plan. Superintendent Smith?
Yes, and I'd like to welcome Neil Sullivan, our Chief Financial Officer, to the podium, who will present the MESD Local Service Plan for review and approval.
Good evening, Board and Neil Sullivan. I, I'd like to give a little bit of background before we get into what we're doing. Tonight is just a work session, and we are going to bring this back on February 24th for a vote. State law requires that the participating school districts in the local service plan of the, of the Multnomah County E S D vote by March 1st by resolution, and we have to turn the resolution in to them. And so that's why we're here tonight. Part of it is the, the book that they publish in what they call a local service plan is a menu of the items that are being offered by the educational service district. This is put together by the, the E S D. It is overseen by the council of superintendents for the E S D, and they actually agree to the programs that are going to be offered. What does that mean to Portland Public Schools? Is that we can participate in all, a portion, and/or not participate in one of the menu items. This is how thick the book is. And what I tried to do was save paper and make it so that I didn't send each one of you a whole book. And the online version of my report has a link that can be taken directly to this in PDF form. We're talking 176 PDF pages. I did make two printed copies available through the print shop for those who would rather spend the next few weeks going through the programs that they do offer. You'll find them very interesting. I would also like to point out that part of the programs that we do participate in, we publish in our budget, annual budget that's adopted. And it is, includes the programs that we happen to participate in, in this fiscal year. And as we put our budget together for the 1415 year, we will align the programs that we decide to choose out of this menu of items. And so without trying to read to you the resolution, because I know you can read it, I would be open for any questions that you would like to ask.
Any questions from the board members?
Anybody want a book?
Yeah, I do, I.
Okay.
There you go. You have a ticker.
Reason I did two is because we had two new board members.
Thank you very much. The board will vote on the local service plan at our February 24th meeting as well. Okay, next agenda is our business agenda. The board will now consider the remaining items on its business agenda, having already voted on resolution 4871. Ms. Houston, are there any changes to the business agenda?
No, there is not.
Okay. Do I have a motion to second, and second to adopt the business agenda?
Move, so move.
Second.
Director Belile moves, and Director Morton seconds the adoption of the business agenda. Ms. Houston, any public comment? Okay. Is there any board discussion on the business agenda? The board will now vote on the business agenda. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? The business agenda is approved by a vote of six to zero. The business agenda is approved by a vote of six to zero, with Student Representative Davidson voting.
Yes.
Chairman, maybe just a quick-
Director Morton?
I just want to point out Neil's Seattle tie, which I can only assume is in celebration of the Seattle Seahawks victory in the Super Bowl yesterday.
Woo-hoo!
Am I right, Neil? Thank you very much for representing.
Okay. I forgot to mention at the beginning of the board meeting that Director Regan is in Washington DC with the National School Boards Association lobbying our Congress for better and more school funding, so let's all keep our thoughts with her. And then also, before we adjourn, I want to call out somebody else who is leaving us soon, Rob Cowie, who is currently our Executive Director of Community Involvement and Public Affairs, has accepted a position with Cambia as their Assistant Director for Internal Communications. Rob's been with the district as long as I have, so a long time, six years, and has done yeoman's work for us, and I asked my colleagues to join me in giving Rob a hand and say, "Thank you." There he is, come on down here. Come on. Can we have a few wise words?
Thank you, Director Knowles, and thank you to members of the board. I, yeah, it's been six years. I have kids in Portland Public Schools, so it's been both an important professional journey and an important personal one as well. It's been really a pleasure and an honor to support you and serve with you and to be part of really six years of very profound and positive changes in Portland Public Schools. And, and as I leave, I'm looking forward to going to a great organization in Cambia and spending some more time with my kids and my wife, and, and also looking forward to continuing to do what I can from the community side to continue to support this school district and, and the great work that I know all of you will be doing, so thank you.
Great, great. Well, we really, we really thank you for your service, Rob. As I said, yeoman's work, especially in these times. I see Superintendent Smith has-
Well, we've been doing a bunch of this. I'm just going to mark that- That Rob has been here for six years during the time and was really instrumental in helping us during, document and produce the report on high school system design, and then also, which was huge community process in recommending, like, significant change to our high school system. That's part of what we're seeing the result of right now in the more balanced enrollment and opportunity to offer program. And then authored, again, a report that was the update on high school system design and really looking at measuring our metrics that we had set back in 2010. But he's also done significant work that now you just take for granted about what our communications department and mechanisms look like that didn't exist prior to him being here, and the ways in which we are doing, you know, social media and web and the pulse and ways we're communicating with parents and ways we involve community that are really a tribute to his leadership. So, I've just enjoyed tremendously working with you, Rob, and, and just good moment with a good body of work behind you as you take leave and go to your new position. So, I wish you well and will miss you terribly.
Thank you.
So, I'd ask my colleagues to join me in congratulating Rob and wishing him the best of luck in your new position, so.
Yeah.
The next meeting of the board will be held on February 10th, 2014. This meeting is now adjourned.